Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, April 6th. It's a little bit after 6:30. We have four members present. Councilman Britton will be joining us shortly. At this time, if everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I think I have two curdles right there in the front, don't I? Which curdle would like to lead?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Chief, would you do the honors, please? Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
How is your son's married life so far?
Well, he's not home, so it must be wonderful.
He hasn't come back.
Utility bills have come down, groceries have come down.
Beautiful.
Life is good. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Our Heavenly Father is reflecting on the Easter weekend and all the blessings and promises that you have assured us. Lord, we just thank you so much for what you've done for this community and the protection that you've afforded us and the prosperity that we enjoy in this town. We have so many wonderful things to be grateful for for this community. We ask for your blessings and protection on our elected officials, local, state, federal, our military members, our public safety, all of our employees. And Father God, we ask tonight in particular, and thank you very much for the protection that you've provided our two hometown teams, cheerleading squads, and the success they've had, that you would bless them and their families and keep them in good health in all that they do. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. Alrighty, our first order of business is we have two state champion cheerleading squads who we're going to recognize this evening. So why doesn't Council join me down up front? we get to recognize both of our high school cheer squads. Both teams went on to win state championships in their respective divisions, and then both of them went on to the Nationals, where I believe they both placed in the top 20 in Nationals. I'm pretty sure, but we'll let the coaches tell us all about that. So why don't I invite up here first, we'll start with Hagerty High School. We have the athletic director, Jay Geddy. Jay, where are you? Come on in. Come on, Jay. And then I'd like to introduce the cheerleading coach from Hagerty High School, Ms. Kim Hackman. Kim, come on in. And Kim, you're going to tell us everything that these girls accomplished, and then why don't you introduce them all? We'll have them come in, and then you can give us a good old Hagerty cheer. How about that? Alrighty.
Hi, thank you for having us. Our team, we had a great season. We went to our regional championship, and we won that, sending us straight to the state finals. And then we ended up winning that for the second year in a row. And then we went on to Nationals and made it from prelims, semis into finals, placing eighth. And now we have three top-ten finishes in our school history. So it was a great run, great season for all of us. And the girls worked really hard. So we're going to go ahead and introduce them. Haley Como. Lauren Swinford. Elena Knar. Sarah Gibson. Ashley Lubisher. Kellen Marini. Shelby Shepherdson. Ashley Lenick. Olivia Albano. Shelby McCaslin. Taylor Scolora. Stephanie Benning. And Haley Parlet. Okay, guys, if you guys want to go ahead and...
Go get out of here.
Everybody do the Husky rumble. Everybody do the Husky rumble. Everybody rumble. Everybody do the Husky rumble. Everybody rumble. Everybody do the Husky rumble. Everybody rumble.
I've got to stand up front because I'm short. I'm going Jay. Jay needs you to talk. Thank you for coming down today. who also took a state championship, excuse me, for the second year in a row, and went on to Nationals as well. And I believe we have their cheerleading coach, is it Courtney? No? Brenda? Who do I have here?
Shannon.
Alrighty, well, that's all I have on my list, Shannon. Come on in. And what is your last?
Shannon Woodard, guys.
Coach, give her a round of applause.
Alright. Oh, well, the girls did awesome. They placed first at states, beating the reigning champs, Dr. Phillips. So they did awesome. They did fantastic, nailed the routine. And at Nationals, they also nailed the routine and did phenomenal. So I'm going to go ahead and start naming them. This is Lexi Kraft. Brooke Connolly. Grace Harper. Nina De Bellis. Christina Kingsley. Natalie Bozinski. Faith Doyle. Samantha Semilano. Selena Smith. Reagan Johnson. And our only senior, Mackenzie Acock.
You all do this quite often.
Maybe you better get a sock or something.
Alright, before you go, parents, take that shot. That's the end of the ceremonials, right? Yep. That is the end of the ceremonials tonight.
Would you like to go back?
I'm hanging. No. I knew what I wanted.
Yeah, exactly. Well, a little bit after that.
Yeah, it'll be okay.
Yeah.
Alright, it looks like the meeting's adjourned. And Barbara, just mark down, Councilman Britton is here. Alrighty, our first order of business, item number three, it's the approval of the minutes of our February 23rd, 2015 work session and the March 2nd regular session. What is the pleasure of council?
I think motion to adopt both the February 23rd and the March 2nd.
Second.
Minutes?
Motion second, any discussion?
No, sir.
No? Good. All those in favor of the motion to adopt, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to the public comment portion of the meeting. Item number four. Barbara, are there any written requests? We have no written requests this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on any item, either on or not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda, routine items, item number five through 11. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hackett.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Anything on the consent agenda, Councilman Hackett?
No, sir, looks good.
Councilman Braden?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilman Schenk?
Fine, sir.
You're good? Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 12. It is our first public hearing of two. Ordinance number 1619 is the vacation of a utility easement for Evans Grove, Inc. Mr. Groot, could you read ordinance number 1619 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning a 20-foot utility easement located east of Oviedo Boulevard along the east property line of Lot 12, Evans Grove, as depicted more specifically in the attached Exhibit A, providing for findings, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, non-cotification, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to vacate a 20-foot utility easement that is no longer in use by the city. The easement is located along the eastern boundary of the Evans Groves property, Lot 12, as identified by the Seminole County Property Appraiser, in just west of the villages at Kingsbridge West Conservation Parcel. The purpose of the vacation is to assist with the development of Lot 12. The city engineer has determined that vacating the utility easement will not be detrimental to the public. Franchise operators, utility operators, have been notified and expressed no comments regarding the proposed vacation. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1619.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Does the applicant have anything?
David Axel, Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway, Suite 1, here tonight on behalf of Evans Groves. Just here to concur with the staff recommendation and say we appreciate their assistance in this matter. And I'm here for any questions if the council has any. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against ordinance number 1619? Seeing none, close public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hackett.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1619.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilman Hackett?
No, sir, it's fine.
Councilman Schenk?
It's fine, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Alrighty. Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1619. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to, we didn't say you could leave, Mr. Axel. Have a nice night, David. Moving along, up to Resolution number 2971-15, Southern Oaks Phase 1 replat and vacate of a portion of a platted alley created in the plat of Ari Corner, Taylor Morrison of Florida. Phew, that was mouthful. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The Southern Oaks Phase 1 subdivision consists of approximately 12.87 acres and is located on the south side of State Route 434, approximately 620 feet east of Calypso Way on the south side of 434. The preliminary subdivision plan site development order was approved by the city council on August the 5th of 2013. The replat consists of 21 lots for single-family residential units, seven tracts of land designated for public right-of-way, private right-of-way, open space in stormwater, lift stations, recreation lots, wetland buffers, and landscape tracts. The replat vacates a portion of a 22-foot alley adjacent to the eastern boundary of the property that was part of the Ari Corner plat. The survey and consultant reviewed the plat and has found it consistent with Chapter 177 Florida statute and has executed the subject plat. The city attorney also reviewed the plat and found it acceptable. The staff recommends approval. The DRC also reviewed the plat and recommends approval. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution number 2971-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing, as was announced. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on Resolution number 2971-15? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2971-15?
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds. Councilman Schenk?
Sir.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilman Hackett?
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Alrighty, hearing no questions. The motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2971-15. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, item number 14, first reading of ordinances. This one is ordinance number 1620. It is fats, oils, and grease waste disposal. Who knew? Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to fats, oils, and grease regulation and management, providing for definitions requiring actions by sewer system users relating to the control and elimination of fats, oils, and grease discharges into public sanitary and stormwater sewer system, storm sewer systems, providing for legislative findings, intent, and purposes, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and correction of scrutiny errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, before you begin, I think Drew needs a timeout.
I heard that.
Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, Mayor. The cut name for this ordinance is FOG. And this is a request for the council to adopt a local, commercial, non-residential fats, oils, and grease ordinance. Current building codes do ensure that grease traps are installed for commercial food establishments. However, the city has never established a monitoring program for addressing the proper collection and disposal of large quantities of fats, oils, and grease products without the localized program. This could result into a degradation of the city's infrastructure as far as its utilities, as far as its stormwater system, and also its natural water bodies. The purpose of this program is to have a monitoring program for the collection and disposal of the fats, oils, and grease. There will be logs that will be required that the staff will be able to inspect. The logs will be maintained on the property. The inspection will become part of the city's NPDES reporting requirement. The city council is asked to schedule a public hearing for May the 4th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1620 on May 4th, 2015, here in the council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, Councilman Hackett? Councilman Schenk?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilman Britton?
Just one question, does this apply to the Christmas Eve turkey fry event?
Probably. You're going to come out and inspect our grease? Excellent.
Okay.
I do have a question, though. Just, I'll be brief, and we can answer it tonight or we can answer it at second reading. I mean, how burdensome is this going to be for us to initiate, follow up on? And is the problem really that great?
It's not a widespread problem, but it has been an issue in the past with illicit discharges, especially in the stormwater system, where if the grease gets on the ground, it can cause contamination. And we've had serious infrastructure issues in the past where if grease gets in the sewer system, backs it up, causing issues. And it's just a way to monitor what people already should be doing. As far as monitoring, I don't anticipate it being too great of a challenge. Right now, we're looking for the stormwater coordinator to go around and make sure it's being done properly.
Yeah, because, I mean, don't most restaurants use a, like, what is that? The Filter Fry guys?
Yes, sir, they do, but we've had a...
Refresh the oil and take it away?
Typically, yeah, it's easy to stay out of trouble. We have had some instances where they end up in a 50-kg drum in the back, and then it gets dumped or illegally disposed, and that's what we're trying to curb.
Okay.
Bobby, aren't they supposed to have, like, on the sewer system, a grease trap right there at the business?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And they're like big boxes?
Yes, sir.
And they're supposed to just come in, somebody comes in and cleans them out every so often, right?
Supposed to, yes, sir.
So now you're just going to monitor it, make sure...
Yes, sir, just to make sure they're doing what they should be.
Any other questions? Good. Thank you, Bobby. Alrighty, seeing no other questions, the motion on the table is to schedule the public hearing for May 4th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. for ordinance number 1620. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, we're up to item number 15. This is Resolution number 2958-15. It is a work order for Little John Engineering. Just open this up. Come on, there you go. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve work order number 1502 in the amount of $84,450 to Little John Engineering Associates for Professional Economic Development Services through September 30th of 2015. You originally reviewed this resolution in February, in January, excuse me, in January. And you asked it to be placed on the February 23rd work session, where we discussed the work order with Mr. Jones. He then took and made revisions to the work order based on city council's input. Mr. Jones is here tonight. If you'd like to have him walk you through the economic development program. The city council is, there are sufficient funds within the budget to cover the work order number 1502. It's recommended that city council approve Resolution number 2958-15.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no request to speak forums on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council. I need a motion. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution 2958-15.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilman Hackett, any comments?
Just real briefly, I spoke with Mr. Jones today and Brian about just to make sure we were clear from the last one. We're going to, you know, aside from everything that's here, John and his company are also going to look outside of Florida for people that may be looking to come here, you know, that want to get out of, you know, higher tax places, places that got issues that we could be good. So John's going to work on that a little bit and see what we can do. I think there's a lot of people out there primed to move if they, we just tell the story. I've been talking about that for years. But John and I talked a little bit today, so if you want to get a little more details, you know, maybe get with him later. But he's going to incorporate that in here, so we'll not just be looking at Florida, but looking nationally about getting some companies here, small ones, big ones, whoever's thinking about moving.
Nice. You're going to nail a little palm tree in sand to everybody in the Northeast and a bottle of water to California? There you go. Councilman Schenk?
I'm good, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Alrighty, motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2958-15. Hearing no further questions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, we are up to Resolution number 2972-15, mid-year budget amendment. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve the mid-year budget amendments that involve adjustments to various revenues and expenditures. Our city financial policies require that the council approve budget amendments for all inter-fund transfers, regardless of the amount, increases or decreases in appropriated fund balance, and for any increase in the total approved appropriation level of a fund. The mid-year budget amendment that is provided in Exhibit 1 of the resolution reflects the changes that have occurred within the budget since the beginning of the fiscal year. And the changes to each of the affected funds reflect the total increase or decreases to the fund, and the amendment or change to the revenues, expenditures, and inter-fund transfers in appropriated fund balance. Tonight, the city council is, it is recommended that city council adopt Resolution number 2972-15. Ms. Hayes is here, if you have questions about specific parts of the amendment to address any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to address the city council? I have no written request. Hearing none, close it. What is the pleasure of council? Need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2972-15.
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, any questions?
No.
Good. Councilman Hackett?
I just have one question. When we, maybe this is a Robin question. When we budget for the 92%, 93% of the taxes that come in, what do we do to the 8% that don't pay their taxes? I mean, it seems like such a large number. I know that's how we budget and it flies, but do we just give up on that? Or how does that work?
Does Robin look like someone who would give up on that?
No, sir. We budget 96%.
Right.
We do typically receive a little bit more than that. Last year, I believe, if I looked at the budget, it's about 98% we collected. The year before, maybe 96.2, 96.5.
Okay.
But what you don't see in that, there's also an accounting stream called delinquent taxes.
Right.
And there are years those taxes exceed our budget by, you know, large amounts. Last year, $89,000, and delinquent, we budgeted 10 or 15. This year, I think we've received already maybe $15,000, maybe a $7,000 budget. So they do come in, they're at different times according to what's happening, what caused the, you know, what the reasoning of us not collecting. So we do receive those, but that's by statute, the 96%. You know, 95 was the minimum. I mean, that's what's required.
So they put liens on you when you don't pay your taxes?
Yes, they do. For sale.
Just wanted to know.
But we do collect more taxes.
And those government liens come first, even in foreclosures.
Right, okay.
And we do show those as an actual. So we do use those funds. We'll bring them back to you at year-end, because we don't know those numbers at this point in time.
Right.
As you know, the tax, property appraiser, all the information, all the taxes were due March 31st. So I don't have those numbers for you right now.
Right.
And we do receive revenue from those through July and August. So year-end, if that's a substantial amount of dollars above the 96%, we'll bring that back to you as a year-end, or to fall as part of fund balance in the new year.
Done, yeah.
You receive it and see it either way.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Robin.
You're welcome, sir.
Robin, before you leave, is there any other questions for Robin?
No.
Or staff on this? No? Thank you, Robin.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alrighty, the motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 2972-15. Any further questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our first discussion item, item number 17. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide staff direction regarding the designation of polling locations for the November 3rd, 2015 general election. In order to budget properly for the city standalone election and begin preliminary planning, we need to know about the number of polling locations to open. We'd also like direction about early voting and related and other matters regarding the election process. We did work with Supervisor of Elections, Ortell. Regarding this request, he did suggest a couple of options. Option one being opening one polling location at City Hall, and also one day of early voting. And the second one, the second option that he suggested was opening four precincts, focusing on those locations that have the highest voter turnout, and then also a combination of optional early voting as well, possibly up to three days. A third option would be to open all of the polling locations and also to establish early voting. As I stated, the early voting is optional, it can be conducted in Sanford at the Elections Office, or it can be conducted at a location here in the city. If you remember, with the last election in November, we did early voting at the gymnasium. We provided for you some cost estimates in your memorandum that Ms. Barbour put together. There are two costs, there are the cost of the election, then also the cost with the early voting added in. There are also options as far as the early voting is concerned. Tonight, we ask for your direction regarding how you would like us to plan for the polling locations and early voting for the November 3rd election.
Open it up to council.
Mayor?
Yep.
I just feel we'd go with option number one, with the one day early voting and the absentee ballots available. I think there are numerous ways for people to get their vote in at this time. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit of turnout either way, but I think that's the best way.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would prefer number two, to make it more convenient and accessible to the, our residents. I know it's a little bit more money, but I just think it would make it easier on them to have the three early voting days with four locations.
Okay, we got one and one. Councilman Breton, do you have a preference of one, two, or three?
I don't have a preference.
Councilman Henkin?
Well, I like, I like for the off-year one, honestly. I think we should have two polling places, one out east, because there's a lot of people out east, so I like precinct 76 open, and then City Hall. And, you know, you could have two days of early voting, the absentee is, it's a big absentee election anyway, but I like two. I like City Hall, and I like Live Oak.
See, we lean towards option two with a little bit of tweaking.
Yes.
I would probably say the same, option two with a little bit of tweaking. That's the problem with these off-year elections, we've gotta address this sometime and get us all onto general cycle and let Seminole County pick up the cost, you know, while all the other elections are going on, you know, and then every polling place is open. But that's a debate for another day. Sounds like we have three consensus for a modification of option two, either four polling places, two polling places, just see what the costs are, Brian and Barbara, and we'll go from there. All righty, moving on. I'm sorry, were you clear on that?
Two, I'll change, two polling places.
Two polling places? Okay.
Do you need this, like, in stone? Does he need, Brian, do you need this in stone, like, now? You don't wanna put this off to another meeting?
I would like to, I need to ask Ms. Barbour that. It's more to help her with her planning for the election.
As long as we're here, I think you wanna know now.
You have to do a resolution?
Uh-oh. Two polling places, three, whatever you'd say, three days.
Yeah, but the difference in the polling places is $900, and that's, that's nothing. I mean, you go from two to four, gotta give people an opportunity to vote. I mean, I hear you, just, we open up to City Hall like they used to in the past, when it was a smaller city.
You're looking at the numbers, if we had the numbers from the other one, what it would show, versus the numbers from the last election, you know, the off-year election, it shows that, you know, seven people, you know?
The last off-year is so old.
Right.
And we opened every polling location.
Exactly, we had every polling location, and it was minimal people at polling locations.
It was approximately the $1,100, $1,300 per polling location.
It was dead.
The early voting is what's really expensive.
Right.
Well, I like the two, I like the two locations, one kinda central and one out, out east, so that would be my vote, for precinct 76 and for City Hall. What number is City Hall?
City Hall isn't the precinct anymore.
No, it's, you're right.
It's just a location.
Right, that's right, yeah, so I like Live Oak and City Hall.
The other thing you start getting into, though, is, again, people get confused when you move it. You have one place, City Hall, it's City Hall. You can tell, just keep promoting it, City Hall, City Hall, City Hall, City Hall, versus now, if you're gonna open up two or change people to three or four locations, that has tended to be problematic for us every time, versus it's City Hall for the off-year. You can tell people.
I like that.
My only other, the only other input is, we've always had feedback from that, when people, I went to the Women's Club, which hasn't been, you know, and-
Well, people are gonna go to their natural polling place anyway.
Right.
So that's gonna happen. All right, shoot for two, that seems to be consensus, east and west.
Okay.
And go from there.
How many early days, how many early voting days?
I think you gotta have three, but that's just my opinion.
How many?
Well, the choices here are one day or three days.
I know, Mr. Henkin did, Mr. Henkin recommended two, I guess you could go with two days.
Oh, could we? Just do one weekend, Saturday and Sunday? That sounds like a good idea.
It does.
Yeah, two days? Okay.
One weekend, the weekend before the election.
Mm-hmm.
All right, now you got it?
Yes, sir. Barbara, does that, does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotta get everybody onto the general cycle somehow, governors and presidential. Make this much easier. All right, moving on, we're on to item number 18. This is Starbucks project at Oviedo on the Park. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn it over to you, and I'll let you run us through it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide direction regarding the proposed Starbucks project at the Oviedo on the Park. You're going to be sitting in your role as land use administrator, both in this agenda item and the next.
Brian, just excuse me one second. Linda, can we get an easel? Do we have one somewhere? Oh, Chief is, Chief is here. Sorry, Brian.
That's fine.
Thank you, Chief.
And what I would recommend to you is that this is basically a pre-application meeting. And Chief, you might wanna bring that up closer to the podium, probably. They may need it up there. This will be a pre-application meeting.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. David Morris has been working with the staff on the design of the proposed Starbucks. And, but he hasn't, he hasn't formally applied yet, and one of the things that he has been doing with the staff is brainstorming based on the input that was given at city council's April 28th, 2014 work session. When you gave him input regarding the design, and also you gave him advice on what you would consider as far as a land development code amendment. Mr. Morris has worked closely with our development services staff, in particular with Dr. Correa and Dr. Fruitt, regarding the design of the Starbucks. And the staff took it on upon a goal. Their goal was to create a Starbucks that when seen, people would say that's the Oviedo Starbucks. And so that was the thing that they looked at. We went through a number of iterations to try to mitigate the impact of the, of the drive-through facility that is proposed, and actually had, took it all the way up through the Starbucks organization. They weren't able to agree to what was proposed by the staff, however, but that gave us the indication that we would work on turning it into the, everyone would know it was the Oviedo Starbucks. Mr. Morris is here tonight to present the latest drawings that he has for you to review. Also, Dr. Correa and Dr. Fruitt are here tonight to, if you have any questions regarding staff's review and work with Mr. Morris. You'll also see some renderings regarding a retail restaurant building that will be located next door to the Starbucks. And they have also brought in similar architecture that with, that will match with the Starbucks. And the site, and he's gonna show you the site plan and how the two buildings will work together. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Morris and let him bring you the Starbucks proposal.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Starbucks building.
Your show.
That didn't work out.
Again, I appreciate your time, I just wanted to present to council what this is, still conceptual, and when we submit our site plan, and, which should be actually within the next, this week, we'll refine this, and everybody will have a chance to review it formally, but I wanted to give the council an idea of what we were envisioning, and hopefully get some feedback from council as to, you know, if this was in lines with what they would like to see. Obviously, as a developer and a businessman, we're gonna be spending some enormous amount of time and resources and money to move forward on the process, and given the city's process for the land development code change going concurrent with our site plan, I felt it would be beneficial to kinda know upfront if this was a direction that you guys liked, for all intents and purposes, and as opposed to waiting to the end. So this is the Starbucks building. We've, it's pretty self-explanatory, we've tried to introduce something unique in place of storefront windows. Murals, these are just, you know, example murals, we can pretty much put anything in there. If this is something that everybody seems to like, they can be more tailored towards the tenant themselves, or they can be generic. The main thing that we've done is all feature to separate the drive-through from City Plaza Way, so that when you're on City Plaza Way, whether you're driving or you're sitting on benches, you're not feeling like you're up against a, you know, a drive-through. You just walk, see what that is, and then overlay it in front of the building, so it gives you an idea of what it should look like, on top of each other. A little water feature, the big wall, landscape, and the eye into City Plaza Way.
I'm sorry, David, you said water feature?
Yeah.
Can you explain? Oh, okay. Are those benches on either side of the water feature?
Uh, benches with- Skipping behind them, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then, just to give you an area of view. All right, this one isn't as big. The patio across the drive-through, City Plaza Way side, we're encouraging strongly, and I believe we have support of the tenant, but I can't guarantee it, for them to locate those tables on that side with their patio, so it's perceived as one cohesive patio. Short of that, you know, we'll still commit to putting something there and having it for, you know, go over with their coffee or take a break. We're covering the drive-through with a trellis feature. It's aluminum, you know, just to kinda, aluminum beams, for lack of, like, a trellis feature.
And they're dark brown?
Yeah, to match the, and to match the wall. And the colors are pretty much, colors were going for, we still have some tweaking to do on that. We've got some input from the master developer, you know, on what, you know, what he's looking for, but indications are where, you know, this is generally what it's, what the colors are gonna look like, and of course, those exact colors will be presented with our, with our package to the city.
Right, so the trusses are dark brown to tie in with the brown brick of the building, not purple.
Thank you. And then- We're tying to the Starbucks, but hopefully to give it a little bit of its own uniqueness as well. I mean, we don't wanna make it exactly, no, we don't really want the two buildings to blend together. We kinda wanted them to be somewhat, somewhat unique.
Now, does this building not require, the tenants that you're gonna have in there, they do not require any sort of outdoor seating?
Uh, this tenant-
The one that you've been working with?
Hard patio.
Oh, okay, there it is.
Apologize.
Okay. Yes. We just put the handicap on that side, flip it around, okay. Conceptual.
It's conceptual, we tried to make it as detailed as possible at this level, just so that you could, you know, we wanted you to, we wanted to be thorough, but, you know, we still have some input from, as I said, from the developer, we also are gonna get input from the tenants. These tenants that we're dealing with have a unique opinion of what they think is right or wrong, so we-
They've both been pretty successful, so I guess they-
Yeah, they know what they're doing.
How many square foot is the Chipotle?
Chipotle is 2,400 square feet.
That's all they are?
That's all they are, that's actually one of their largest. They're anywhere from, you know, 22 to 2,400 is their-
Okay. How big is Starbucks building?
Starbucks is about 2,100 square feet. And they originally, when we first came to you, their prototype was almost 1,900, and they recently asked to increase the size for their largest store.
Okay.
So this is about as large a store as they built right now, to my understanding.
How many cars are you stacking? I counted, I thought nine, maybe 10, but it was-
Uh, oh, no, we're up to, I think on how you measure it, we, from a reality standpoint, I feel there'll be easily 12 to 13 cars you're able to stack.
And not be out on Michael Verda way.
And that is, everybody's gonna have that concern, from the, from the city to us as the landlord to the tenant. One of the first things the tenant looks at is, and they know how successful they are in the drive-through, is making sure there is enough stacking cars.
That Chipotle building, in one of our attachment, it shows that it's 4,987 square feet.
I apologize, that's- It's that, the entire building, they're only taking roughly half.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, they're-
Just answering one question, just for clarification.
Sure.
When you come into the drive-through for Starbucks, you're gonna come in on Mike, you're gonna come up City Plaza Way to Microberto, you're just gonna come in the back, how are they getting out of there? Are they gonna meander through the parking lots back up to Microberto Way?
Yes.
And use that same-
Well, eventually, when the rest of the property is developed, we'll have common access points.
Okay.
With the balance of the development, and of course, whatever, but-
Okay. So once they come out of that drive-through, they got the, they're just gonna meander through that parking lot, come out the same way they came?
And they can go around the building, most likely go up here, as you can see.
Come out the same.
Our entrance off Microberto Way is wider than normal.
Yeah.
And the lane is just, just the drive-through, it's just gate, it's that, and then I pass, and then you can get out.
Until it gets more developed, they'll have a few more options.
Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, because later on, then Michael Verda Way, we're somehow or another gonna either go over to Oviedo Boulevard or head east, so.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever request that you guys have, I'll hang on.
We're going to pull you back up for questions, I want to hear from Dr. Carrera, her opinion. Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Carrera, why don't you tell us what you think of this?
Well, we worked with Mr. Morris from the beginning. Our initial idea was to work with the site plan, so we proposed to flip the building so that we wouldn't have the drive-through facing City Plaza Way. Mr. Morris was open to work with us, he proposed a new site plan that we were comfortable with. Unfortunately, Starbucks did not approve, and actually, also our public works director was also concerned about traffic. We could not really solve the issue of the drive-through and the, and the stacking to change the position of the drive-through. So we had to abandon, you know, the possibility of working with the site plan, then we focused on working with the architecture, trying to mitigate the fact that we had a service lane facing City Plaza Way. And the idea to bring the wall and have this, you know, dressed, dressed up wall with a water feature, with benches, with landscape, with the trellis above the drive-through, was a way to, to not only bring the building closer to the street, but dress it up so that it would not be, you know, we would not be facing a service lane. So that was the idea of the wall. I think we've worked with Mr. Morris, and we are comfortable with what, what he's proposing right now. I think we've managed to, to have a, a unique type of architecture to Starbucks, I mean, this is a different Starbucks than we, we see, you know, in other areas of Central Florida, and, and I think it gives a different character, and I think it's, it's compatible with what we are proposing for Oviedo Park.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Carrera?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carrera. All righty, David, why don't you come on back up, we'll see if we have any questions for you. Any questions for Mr. Morris?
Questions?
I have one question. The yellow or the tan, they're not windows, or are they windows? If you look in the first, the west elevation...
Right, right here.
No, no, above it, the blank tan.
Yes.
No, 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 right where you were, just go up, there you go, right there. What are those?
Walls.
Just walls, what, what are you proposing?
Stucco. We've got three, three materials, we're going to do a party board, rim, and some... For the smoother area. Okay, it's pretty obvious.
All right, so the stucco's like an Ephesus with a medallion in the center there of some sorts. It's a little rectangle, whatever.
The rectangle's on water.
I didn't know if that was a medallion or if that was a water spill. Those up the top, the little dots.
Yeah. I think it's a light.
Light, okay.
Any other questions? Yes?
Are you, are you asking for our approval?
I'm going to get there.
You're going to get there?
Yes.
I'll wait till you, I'll wait till you do that, I don't have any questions, except for now.
The, um, I'm the, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Councilman Britton, you're okay? Good, okay.
The one with the, that chose the little patio out by the walkway.
The site plan, you want the bird's eye view?
The site plan, perfect, sorry. Because previously, you had said that it was, that they, they're not, they're not bought in yet on taking care of that, who's going to take care of it and how it will be taken care of? That's concerning.
If they don't, I will.
I understand, I don't know what that means.
I'll have a table out there, we'll make sure it's policed.
Because that's one of those things like we have with Drew.
Yeah.
I mean, we, if you've been here ever, we beat the heck out of Drew at times about garbage, about stuff like that, so that's a big concern that we're going to hear if it becomes...
I would answer it this way, hopeful, well, not hopefully, in the same first-class manner that we would maintain the rest of the buildings and the parking lot, because we would be responsible for sweeping if the tenant's not. Generally, in these deals, it's either the tenant or the landlord, whoever we can pass the buck on to. If we can't, then...
No, I'd love them to take care of it, yeah, I'd love them to take care of it too, I know you would too, it's just I'm trying to look at that.
Well, I think where I was going with, when I, when I indicated that we're trying to get them to do it, it wasn't necessarily from a standpoint of taking care of it, is I'd like to see it a Starbucks patio.
Yeah.
If we could, I think the city, from the indications I've heard, is that's what the city would like, but if I can't get them to do that, then we'll make sure there are some seating areas out there and that they'll be policed.
All right. Seeing no other questions, now we'll move on to, what does council think of it? Let's start, Councilman Britton, you good?
Good, I'm just, my question is, what do we need to do to make this happen?
We'll find that out in just a moment. Beatty, Mayor?
I think it looks good.
All right. Councilman Schenk?
I, I don't like drive-throughs, so I'll start that right off the bat, so it's right there. I like it, what you've done, I, I wish it was better incorporated, I wish it could move forward, it could shift the way staff had said, and move forward. The wall, as you said, I mean, it, it cuts off, I forget what word you used, I wrote it down, separates the drive-through from City Plaza, the whole idea is how it incorporated into City Plaza, not separated from City Plaza. So to me, I'd rather see it turned and somehow pulled forward so that those, you have those tables up front are real, they're all Starbucks, and they're all a place, and they're all, you know what I mean? And, and there's no wall there, so that way, it is a feature, and people can see it all coming through versus just driving in and seeing a wall there. That, that, I wish it could work the other way. I, way out voted here, so I understand on, in terms of a drive-through, but that's the, the one thing that makes that, have that wall there.
My only comment that I would have is, is to clarify my comment about separating, I'm trying to separate the car part of it, but tie the building and everything into it, so...
It looks nice, I'm not, I...
I appreciate, I do appreciate it.
No, it looks really, I mean, for what it is, I, I'm just trying to be, you know, I'd love it to really just flow, so that, you know, and I understand you're, you're open to that, and Starbucks wasn't, I thoroughly understand that, and admire that, so, you know, it, the second building, it looks like the first building, but also looks, I'm going to say, I don't want to say the word plain, but it looks, that's the one building that could be anywhere else. It does tie into our colors and tie into what's over there, but that's a little plain in my, in my opinion. And, and having, and I, but I, I didn't catch the, uh, the little stuff outside of Chipotle either, I thought it was over on the other side, so that's good that they're going to have some tables outside there. But that, that part looks a little, I hate to say the word, so I'm just going to say, it looks a little plain to me, like other places. And where are you asking?
What would you like, more brick on it?
I don't know, I, again, I, you know, guys, I, we were just talking before the meeting how, you know, walking around the place, looking around the place, you're not going to walk there, you're going to go there, you're going to get your food, you're going to leave. And, and those are two places, I'll also preface it back, if you put two places that are huge, my kids, I'm going to live there, my kids are going to hit that Chipotle, they are so thrilled and psyched that a Chipotle's there, that's number one on their hit list. I'd put my gold card for Starbucks against anybody else's too right now and say, let's look, Starbucks has hit big on my hit list too, we're, those are big places that I'm very happy to see there.
You're going to drive your little golf cart up there?
I'm just going to walk over there, you know, but again, it just, if they could intertwine a little bit more and really be ingrained a little bit better, that, that's all I look for is, they're there, they'll be there, you know, but if you're on Microburton Way, if you're across the street at the other building looking, you're going to be looking at the rear end of another building. So if you're on Microburton Way across the street at, I'm going to say, at an ice cream place that may be there, so to speak, coming out the door, you're looking at the rear end of two buildings, versus it's incorporated in some other way. That's, so it's just about incorporation. I understand the drive-through's going to be there, and I, and I'm fine, like I said, it just, if it can incorporate in the, in the other building the same thing, it's on its own sitting over there, if it can incorporate in some other way.
You're good? Yep. Councilman Schenk?
Well, David, I could just say, from my perspective, that's what I'm talking about. When you first came in here, I was very disillusioned that we were even going to get it to begin with, for all the demands we put on you, but, you know, I've sat here for a long time, and these are the kind of buildings, in my opinion, that we've all been asking for, for years. You have a little bit of everything in there. You know, we all talked about brick, we talked about nice things, you know, sometimes when you sit up here, you got to make decisions that you might not personally like with drive-throughs, that was always a little bit contentious, but the majority of our citizens want that drive-through for that. And it is deviating a little bit from where we were in 2003 when we first talked about this, but I think it's a quality company, I think it's a quality-looking building, I think the citizens are going to love it, I love it. I think, I think you did a good job, that, that little water thing put me over, that was a nice touch, so you heard what we were talking about.
You can take Tom for that.
Well, Tom's a good man, but I'm saying, you guys heard what we, what we wanted, and we're trying to make this without deviating as much as we can, but I'm, I'm very comfortable with it, I think it looks great. I mean, is there, you know, some of the things Councilman Schenk talked about, we would like to have those, but, you know, everything can't be perfect, but this is pretty close. So I'm happy with it, you know, and go march on.
Right, thank you.
I like it, I think you did a good job.
Right, I appreciate it.
It's a little bit of a deviation, everybody is correct about that, but, you know, having been here back then and sitting with the downtown study committee, this type of use didn't exist, you know, there wasn't a Starbucks with a drive-through, there wasn't a Panera with a drive-through, and the goal back then wasn't to have Burger King, McDonald's, Banks, or, what was the other one, drugstores that were cropping up everywhere, and no, Tom, you're not getting any of those, but anyhow, I, I think you did a good job. I, you know, I, I tend to agree, I think you could do a little bit more with that, that second building, but you're on the right track.
I appreciate it.
Add a little bit to it, just gussy it up.
You know, one of the things that, and Brian hit on this, city manager hit on this, was, you know, we've talked about it, like a lot of times when drugstores come in, especially like the Walgreens and stuff, we have some in, in the city that are just, you know, they're just regular Walgreens. We talk about that one in Winter Park that's on Park Avenue at Fairbanks, right in that area, it was all brick, and we always talk about that, and Brian just hit it right on the head, this will be, I think, a Starbucks, people will say, that's Oviedo Starbucks, and when you go to some other cities, they're going to go, we want that one, you know, so I think you did a great job.
Well, I really appreciate all your comments, and we will work to make sure you guys get what you need, get what you want.
Let me, let me just make sure that Brian has what he needs before you go. Mr. Cobb, do you need anything else from us other than the consensus you just received that they're on the right track?
I, consensus to move forward with the LDC amendment.
Is there consensus?
Ten-four, yes.
Yep. That sounded four to one to me. Oh, did you? Five to one. Oh, I am impressed. But gussy up that second building.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, you could do, I, I see what Stephen's talking about, we could do a little bit more.
I'll, we'll do...
More brick, more something, more...
How it can connect, I don't know, I'm not a designer.
I'll, I'll figure something else to add to it.
If it can, if it can, it can.
Okay.
Let Dr. Carrera design it for you, completely.
Form it.
Yep, thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Brian? You're good?
No, sir, I'm good.
Can I talk to Brian?
Sure.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
I asked you, now, there was a, we're looking at this as a land development code change, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, the next one, it intrigued me, and I asked you about this a little bit, why wouldn't we put a development agreement on this property instead, just on this property, versus land development code change the entire? In that way, it will do what we all want it to do, is keep, keep everything that's correct, drive-through, blah, 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 to that property, light and tight, versus, and memorialize what we're agreeing to, but it's for that property, versus the land development code change? Because I'm going to, I'm going to have the reverse on the next thing, I've always said the reverse for the next one is, I think these two are backwards, it should be a land development code change for the signs versus a development agreement on the signs. Because development agreement locks you in, and you have to agree with the developer on everything, so why would you do that on a sign thing that might change, et cetera? But on this, why would we, we're going to come to an agreement, we're going to build this, it's going to be perpetual, it will be something that perpetuates on the property for a specific use, a specific reason, why wouldn't we look at a development agreement on this versus the land development code change?
I'm going to have to turn that one over to Mr. Grude.
Sure. Land development agreements, statutory development agreements typically relate to standards, deviations in standards, vesting into, vesting into certain codes, establishment of vested rights that, that may have been disputed prior to the development agreement being approved, but not actual land uses within, that are normally set forth in a Euclidean zoning district-type zoning strategy, which, in this case, a drive-through is a, is a use that's allowed as a land use. And so, those are typically normatively established in your zoning code. So it's not, you, you, otherwise you would be negotiating every use in every...
I understand, but it's...
Zoning district.
Right, but this is, you said for stuff that's not allowed, that's not, it's currently not allowed in that area, correct?
Correct.
So we have to change the land development code...
To allow it as a permitted, as a...
For permitted use.
Permitted use.
Are we going to do that for that single property? Split property, I'm assuming I've got a, the property split, is going to be split off and bought by...
Well, there, in the, in the...
Versus the code for the entire...
In the land development code, in Article Six, Section 6.4, in the new downtown, new downtown development, new downtown zoning district, you have permissible uses, and then you have uses that have locational requirements, you have uses that have other types of architectural requirements, and then you have what we call design performance uses. And so, the idea that we've been tossing around would be, or discussing, would be that we would establish this use as one that has locational requirements, and then we would hone in descriptively and even graphically as to the location that the use would be allowed. We, in treating it much like we have in the new downtown zoning district, we would do the same thing in this, in the new downtown Village Core District. And it would, yes, it would limit the location of the use to a very specific area.
Well said. That was about as well said as you'll hear a...
I'm still saying potato, but it's getting to me, but okay.
I, I think the biggest difference, like Mr. Grude said, when, in this case, we're dealing with the use of land, and as a permissible use, whether it's a permissible or prohibited use. With the next item, which we're going to be dealing signage, and what's allowable signage, what's not allowable signage, and dealing more with standards, that's more attuned to the development agreement. And, but I do understand where you're coming from, that this could also be done through a code amendment as well. It's just that with these types of things, it's, what we've looked at is that we feel it would be better to tie it through the development agreement process.
And I agree with what Brian just said, that, that the next item could clearly be done with a code amendment. This one couldn't be done the opposite way with the development agreement, though, I don't think, because it's just, it's just dealing with a, an inherent use of property as opposed to a standard of use. It's good thought, though.
All righty, well then, moving on to the signage master plan, Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Once again, you'll be sitting as land use administrators, this as well is, is a pre-application meeting, we haven't gone into the formal application process for this program. Back on February 23rd, Mr. Kavanaugh brought forward a sign plan for you to review and, and discuss, and you gave, gave some very good guidance regarding it. One of the, the things that we've talked about with Mr. Kavanaugh is, as we just got through discussing how we, how do we do this, and Mr. Grude has suggested that we follow a statutory development agreement and bring forward this plan. Part of that statutory development agreement is defining a public benefit through this plan. After the February 23rd work session, the staff, that was the concentration... And for you tonight, attachment one in your agenda package is the updated master signage plan as prepared by Mr. Kavanaugh. And it has several tweaks in it that were the result of your guidance at the February 23rd work session. Attachment number three is the plan that is prepared for staff, for the public, the public benefit, how the staff has defined public benefit. And tonight, we would like to get your input regarding the updated master signage plan as provided by Mr. Kavanaugh, also to get your input regarding the public signage plan that was prepared by the staff. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kavanaugh and let him take you through the master signage plan that he has proposed for you to review, and then I'll walk you through the city one with the help of Dr. Correa and Mr. Bolware. And then we'd like to get your guidance so that we can move forward with the preparation of a one singular plan and then an agreement to go along with it. I'm turning it over to Mr. Kavanaugh.
Good evening, Ms. Kavanaugh. Just here to answer any and all questions since the last time we got together and played ping pong, beat the ball back and forth. I don't have copy. I haven't seen the-
The cities are yours.
Cities.
Because I have yours if you want it.
Huh?
This is yours.
No, I don't have that. City, oh, that's what you guys have in your package.
You can let your daughter present to us. It'll probably go over better.
Yeah, I said whatever, but- My lovely daughter.
I'm here to answer your questions. I think the last thing where we left it was, we were talking about some little changes to the entry signs up front. We downsized two of them, flanking on the right and on the left. We increased some of the sizing of the arching. We added some space for some city signage, Drew's request for the amphitheater. We spent a considerable amount of time, I'm talking about hours, going over it with staff, going over with Chris Heitz's group as it relates to massing proportions, you know, where it needs to fall from a street orientation. And what you have in front of you is the final version of what we put together. And the city also came up with some recommended city signs, which I agree with wholeheartedly. We've been working together on those signs. Again, getting with Chris Heitz's group, getting with Brian's and staff, coming up with a plan that works out front. So if you have any specific questions, I can answer those, or we can go page by page, whatever you'd like.
Counselor Lake, have you seen Tom's plan? Would you like him to re-present, or do you want staff to present their plan? Can I do that?
Um, I think Tom could do it.
Tom first?
Yeah.
Counselor Schenk, you okay with that?
Good, good, good.
All right, Tom, it'll be your plan first.
Okay. My plan starts off-
Or is that staff's?
Well, this is going to be my plan. It's the original one that we submitted with a few changes along the way.
Is that what we have right now? Is that what we have?
I believe so.
Yes, ma'am. Attachment one is March 5th.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know. I'd like to say nothing's wishful thinking.
You had them right there. My money just said.
Personally, I would love a steakhouse up there. I think we can get one. You know, it's one of those things, you've got to have all the right parts and pieces. And, you know, we're working quickly assembling all the parts and pieces, but I don't have everything assembled right now to go out and make a-
Multi-tenant, but I like that.
That would be wishful thinking, having all those there, but we'll give it a shot.
The only thing he doesn't like about it is not 30-foot-tall LED blinking.
Need that.
Truthfully, I kind of like the way you think. We're going to turn on the LED lights in about a week. Actually, I've got a meeting out there in a week and a half to go over the programming of it. I just told him to leave it on ESPN because until we can get a program, but it'll give you a good idea of what you guys can see out there with the next couple of weeks.
Are you getting on the thing about the splash bed?
Yeah, right in front of it. You know, what has to happen there is, we are providing all the hardware and the actual software package. The programming of it has to come from somebody else, whether it's the city or whether it's the city hiring somebody, but you know, there's many different facets of what that sign can do. And, you know, I'm not here telling you what it should or it shouldn't do. It's just, somebody needs to come up with a program to operate the sign, to understand the software associated with it, to program it, to say whether it's going to be on from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 p.m. or only special events. And if you're going to keep it on seven days a week, what, is it ESPN playing? You know, you guys can have a continuous loop. It's just a question of, you know, how much content that you want to put on there. You've about exceeded my knowledge as it relates to content, because there's very professional people and organizations out there that do this kind of thing on a daily basis and for a living. And, you know, I would highly encourage you to find them, hire them, and make it just bang up.
All righty, let's look at your signs.
All right, page one just deals with, you know, pole banners, opening soon signs, construction signs, sandwich boards, attention-getting. Really, nothing new here, other than we added a few more orange sections where the sandwich boards can go. Page two just deals with permanent signs. Again, nothing new here. You know, the meat potato is located in the back when you get to the pretty pictures, meaning that the locations haven't changed at all, just some of the design parameters, how they looked. Page three, this is kind of more where we're getting into the multi-tenant sign B actually shrank. You can see the difference between what we call D1 and D2. I think we talked a little earlier about reducing some of the massing, especially on that front entry, which I'm affectionately calling Park Avenue. I'm not 100% sure if Park Avenue, the name is available in the city, or whether 911 or anybody's going to approve it, but you know, for the foreseeable future, we're calling it Park Avenue and referencing on our plans as Park Avenue. You know, page four, same thing, just gives you a bird's eye perspective as you were standing on Mitchell Hammock. Page five, just gives you some colors and some materials. Nothing changed there at all.
Same colors what's out there now, basically?
Yes, yeah. Everything, I would tell you, if it didn't mirror what's out there, the intent is, the permanent signs, the arches, the columns, the brick at the bottom, the colors, the way they're lit up, everything's going to be the same. So that, you know, if you're coming down, you know, Oviedo Boulevard, or whether you're coming down Mitchell Hammock, or you're coming down 434, you're going to be able to identify the project as being all uniform and one. I think page, I think this is six, just gives you an idea of the pole banners. We actually have two of these done. I believe staff over the course of the next week or two is going to put them up, because I want everybody to take a look at them. They're nice. The intent is to have the city of Oviedo on one side and have, whether it's Oviedo on the park, whether it's Park Place Apartments, whether it's Starbucks, we can figure that out later, but one side is purely public, the other side is purely private. And Drew can go into a little further on what they're proposing as far as the public-private partnership. Page seven, again, just elevations, nothing much has changed there. You know, right around the lungs of what we decided with locations, limits, the whole nine yards. Page eight just kind of looks like page seven. Page nine just deals with the A-frame signs. I think what we changed there, the maximum spacing is within storefront frontage length, which we discussed before. Page 10 is just flags, attention-getting devices. They're in specific locations. They're color-coded blue. I don't believe any of them can be seen from Mitchell Hammock. Page 11, it gives just some graphics and, you know, perspective, what the, I would call this what I call a monument sign. This would be located in the front and on the corners, just identifying Oviedo on the park as a whole. Page 12, that's again, that really was put there for the city's benefit, and the city will make their presentation on what they'd like to see there, but that span, that entire, it's almost 20-feet span, that's probably, the mention's not on it because everybody put about 3'6", is pretty much for city use. And Drew will go into it a little bit more, what he needs back for the, you know, the amphitheater and advertising, concerts that's coming. And it could be used for a multitude of things. It could be used for Oviedo on the park. It could be used for, you know, closing down the streets, just having tables out there for a, you know, an event sponsored by chefs or restaurants, whether they be in Oviedo or for other places. I know the city of Winter Park has something, and it's just not city of Winter Park, that, you know, they come from everywhere and set up tables out there. Wayfinders on 13, we talked about that before. I know there was some conversation about making them all, how should I say, one color, one design. We kicked that ball around with our staff and with prospective, how should I say, tenants, and every one uniform said they wanted their logo, their color. For example, take Starbucks. Starbucks did not want that in black. They were very, very adamant that they wanted it in green. All right. Next, just the original sign that we proposed. I believe this is D1. On the next page is D2. These two signs would be in the corners. Kind of in their own island, meaning that there's not much around them. They're not attached to anything, freestanding. The next sign on page 15, these would be very close to other monuments, other columns. They're closer to the front entry, Park Avenue, Mitchell Hammock. You'll have the archway. You'll have some city advertising out there. So we just downsized and massing a little Page 16 is just what I call project-specific identification signs. The apartments will have some of those. There may and may not be in the future, one that says amphitheater on it. But I believe, I can't remember the total number they proposed, but they're on the front side of it. 17 is just signs for the buildings. It's just to keep everything standard. We already have one of these signs on the corner of the building out there. I think it looks pretty sharp. And that is it. The rest of it would be the city-
That sign does look very sharp, but it's very hard to see right now. It's covered with something.
Yeah, I know. Actually, I can take that down.
It would look nicer if we-
People are getting, when, I think I talked to-
I think your sign looks nicer than the banner. If you like the banner, it's your apartment building.
You don't have to get any argument there for it. It's not, you know, a beauty contest. It was there to get people to go back to where my clubhouse is. Now, that should stop. When the park winds down and the construction stops back there and everything gets done and it looks like it's done, then I don't believe I have that problem, because if you guys remember, the single greatest reason that I put it up was the excuse when we got, when people were walking through the door going, "Oh, I thought you guys were under construction still." So they wait. They wait until we think they're done, and then they show up and they lease an apartment. But, you know, so many people tell us, "Well, I thought you were under construction. That's why I didn't come earlier." But that all should end. I think the park is due to wrap up here in the next three to four weeks, and we'll get that all buttoned up, so the construction aspects of things will stop.
And the roads open now. People are driving through it, really liking what they're seeing.
Yeah, and the park looks sharp. Just out there, my daughter out there showed her around earlier, and I got a meeting out there tomorrow morning, but, you know, now's the busy work. It's the punch list items. It's bringing all the color and all the landscaping's going to show up. All the lights are being installed now, so, I mean, the whole thing will really come together in the next couple of weeks.
Anything else, Tom, on your stuff?
I don't, I'll be here to answer questions. I know staff wants to get up here and talk a little bit about their recommended city signs. Again, I have absolutely no problem with the recommended city signs and how they do them. It's just a question of, you know, agreeing as to the ultimate verbiage that needs to go on them and, you know, the ultimate locations, but as it relates to, you know, how they look, what they look, I got no problems with that at all.
Do you have no issue with their attachment three? You've seen it.
What do you call attachment three?
They got someone, Brian.
He just handed you-
Yeah, I have it all attachment. I don't know if it was attachment three.
It's our attachment three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how we identify it in our iPad.
Yeah, I've seen it. I mean, there's-
Why don't we let staff present, and then we'll debate?
You know, there's some decisions that have to be made as it relates, for example, a city sign, which, you know, do you like the more square or do you like the more rectangular one? You know, we still haven't final discussed and hammered out, you know, budgets and costing issues, but, you know, that will come later once we define scope. With that, I'll sit down. Any questions?
You can hammer out the budget. You're going to spend all you want. Mr. Cobb, who would you like to present for staff?
I'll go first, and then we can let the others come in as well.
You're going first.
I'll go first, yes, sir. As you can see up on the screen, the first page-
So, Mr. Cobb, you want us on attachment three, I'm assuming?
Attachment three, yes, sir. We'll start with that. The first part of attachment three is a map, and the map is to show you the locations that are proposed for the parks ground-mounted signs, the arch sign over Park Place Avenue, the city sandwich board signs, as well as the attention-getting devices. The, you can see down at the intersection of Mitchell Hammock Road and Park Place Avenue, there's the, you'll see the B there. That would be the location for the arch. The arch was in your original plan that was presented in February. The plan that was provided in March didn't include the banner, and we thought it would be good to bring the banner back. We spoke with Mr. Kavanaugh. He said yes, that was a good idea. The purple areas on the map are the areas that we're proposing to locate sandwich board signs for Center Lake Park as well as for special events within Oviedo on the park. And I'm not saying that there would be a sign at every location every time, but we wanted to provide you with the locations that would be eligible for us to place the sandwich boards on the, when we do have events. If you'll notice, there is the yellow that basically follows the boundary line of Center Lake Park as well as Lot 5. That would be for us to be able to place attention-getting devices out for events. This was something near and dear to Mr. Bolware's heart, and so we wanted to. But one of the things that we didn't feel like was that those needed to be off-site. We felt we needed to contain those within city property. And so we, those are the locations that we would recommend for attention-getting devices. And that's what the purpose of this map is, just to display those recommended locations for those types of signs. Moving to the, moving to the next page, this is the, what we're recommending for the ground-mounted sign for the amphitheater as well as for the park. There are three locations on the map on the page prior. There were three locations in the park that we were recommending for signage, one being right at the edge of Lot 5, the other being in front of the amphitheater, and then one being over where Boardwalk comes into Center Lake Lane at the base of the hill by the amphitheater. Basically, the amphitheater sign would be the one that would be placed in front of the amphitheater itself, and then the, on the next page, you'll see a sign recommended that says Center Lake Park that would be placed on the different, the east and west sides of the park.
Hey, Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why do we keep calling it a cultural center? Can we please start to call it an event center?
We can. We've stuck with the word cultural center because it helps us when we're talking with the state agencies who give money. And so that's the reason we've stepped, we kept with the-
When we make signs, is it going to say event center?
We can actually, on the signs, we can put anything the council would like us to put.
I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council thinks. It's an event center, though, my point.
But that's the reason why we're doing it. On the next page is the sandwich board signs. As you can see, they are the exact same sign that would be used, that's being used as well in Mr. Kavanaugh's plan, same size, same everything. The only difference is that we outlined where they would be located and then, of course, the uses. We showed how it could be used like for a movie. and then, of course, the uses. We showed how it could be used like for a movie on the park. The next page shows the banner across Park Place Avenue, underneath the arch, and then the next page shows the, the attention-getting devices that would be located on park property, as well as Lot 5. The devices are to be up for 30 days prior to any event and then removed immediately following the event. The materials would be consistent. We would work with Mr. Cavanaugh in creating materials that are consistent throughout the park, and we wanted to give you some various options that we have found in doing our research as well, not just looking at one form of attention-getting device, but what could be used. The next page is a map where we, this takes the map that shows you Mitchell Hammock Road, and is, you know, the plan that was presented earlier showed on the sides of Park Place Avenue, a banner, and what we're recommending, you can see the under B there, it says city sign, we're recommending a permanent sign, 14 feet wide by four feet tall. The upper two feet would be a fixed signage that would be used, that would just state the name of the park, and then the bottom two feet would be a changeable copy area that we would be able to change out as different events come to the city. Keeping, once again, we kept with the same colors and everything that'd go along with the rest of the signage in the park. We'd recommend using the fencing style of ironwork that goes with, if you'll notice, remember from the other sign, using that fencing style ironwork between the towers there. So we would, that's the only change that we would recommend to that map, is putting in the city sign that we're recommending there.
Is that changeable copy, LED changeable copy, or manual changeable copy? What do you propose?
We're open to anything, quite honestly. We talked about knowing that, knowing how, Mayor, you've had a dislike for changeable, for electronic signage. We, our discussions so far have just been on the static side, but we are open to looking at electronic changeable copy, if the council is willing to let us go forward with it.
What do you want to advertise on this?
These would be for city events, namely, the events that would be going on at Center, at the amphitheater.
So like, if somebody's having a wedding, we could put up, "Welcome, Smith Jones Wedding."
We definitely could do that, yes, sir.
What do we allow on changeable copy? 20% of the signage size?
So far, right now, yes, sir. What we'd be recommending for this would probably be around the 50%.
Have to discuss that, because we do as we say, not as we do.
Yes, sir. Well, I said, we're open to, if you were going to go with the static, more static, changeable copy, I would recommend the 50%. We're open to any suggestions regarding electronic. The next page, once again, we just incorporated the city's recommended signage into the map. We added in the archway banner, we added in the city signs on both sides of Park Place Avenue. And then the next page, you get to the permanent sign there. You can see, as I mentioned before, it's 14 feet wide by 14 feet, like, four feet tall, placed on each side of Park Place Avenue, mounted onto the wall, incorporated into the entrance features, what basically is how it would be done. And then the last one, the last page, is the post signs. One of the things we talked about, there are seven areas that are proposed for post signage. We didn't, we don't think that really the city should be located on the post signs that are located along Microburton Way. We think that the city post signage should be located around Center Lake Park. The primary reason is the purpose of these signs are wayfinding, for directional, and so if you go, if you go to Park Avenue in Winter Park, these signs reflect what's around them, and it's usually what's immediately around them. So if you look at the four signs that are, our signposts that are located along City, Center Lake Lane, those would be the signposts that would be best served for wayfinding to the city park, and so we're recommending that only those four signposts be used. The other, the signposts along Microburton Way would be for private entities only, and so that's what our recommendation regarding that. And with that, Mayor, that's our, like I said, Mr. Bowe-Ware and Dr. Correa collaborated on this, and if you have any questions, we're available to address them.
See if the council has any questions. Deputy Mayor, we'll start with you. Only because you're to my right, I'm looking at you.
That's fine. Is there much difference in attachment three and attachment one, Tom's proposal?
Well, the one-
Because I could only see the one, where you have the Center Lake Park with the proposed, like, LED sign-
Right.
Between the two columns.
That's probably the biggest difference, bringing back the archway banner is another difference.
Right.
The focus of what the staff provided in attachment three is to provide signage for the park. In the other signage master plan, the park's really not addressed, okay? It's to address the private property. So I think that's the biggest difference. Obviously, yes, the permanent sign out on Mitchell Hammock Road is probably the biggest difference of all.
I like the idea of the big sign in the center, and I like the LED-
Okay.
-type of sign. I like the banner. The, going back to the attention-getting devices, I see flags and a guy with two arms, and a balloon, hot air balloon type of thing, and then balloons. Are you asking which one we like?
I think Mr. Bowe-Ware would like to have as much flexibility as possible, quite honestly. One of the things that we looked at on the flag, if you look on the extreme left, Lyndon, if you could get us over that page, if you look on the left-hand side, and actually, I'm going to get Mr. Bowe-Ware up here, because I really need his guidance on this. If you look at the flags, we feel that having a more rectangular flag would be better than, say, a tiered dot flag, a curve. We think that would be a better selection for what we're doing in the park. Mr. Bowe-Ware has often mentioned the little men, the little, what I call the flappy men, that he's mentioned that as well, especially like with birthday parties and those types of things, and when you think about the splash pad and the video tower, that's going to become birthday party central. I think it will probably rival Friendship Park one day, as far as birthday parties, and so they bring a real good, it brings that festive birthday party. The balloon, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to seek its help on the balloons. We came across these one, the balloons on the far right are actually very mobile.
They're right?
They're mobile. They're stakes, so that you could use them to cordon off an area. Do you remember, the park is made up of rooms, and so you could take those, and let's say someone was doing something on the family lawn next to the amphitheater porch. We could use the balloons on the far right to cordon that off, so say, okay, this is that, where that, that one event's being held. Of course, the big one, the big balloon, you put the sign on the yellow band, and it tells everybody-
The balloons all the way to the right, are they real balloons that, or are they vinyl? Or what are they?
There's different types. They're actually, they can come where they're reusable. There are some that come that they're actually blowed-up balloons, and then, of course, they're not reusable, but they have those types that are actual balls that you break out each time, fill them full of air, nitrogen, yes, type of helium, and attach them to the pole system, and utilize them for that event each time. Same type thing with the other three attention getting, the waving guy is an air mass in which it's an air blower at the bottom, plugs in, and then, you know, they move. Of course, the balloon style, as Mr. Cobb described, would be utilized possibly for larger events, where we're trying to get attention to display a band or an event, that type of thing. Kind of view this, how I'm kind of looking at this is how we look at our parks and our playgrounds. You look at Friendship Park, as you come in and you look at Friendship Park, you know, it's, the community have really made notice of our staff since we covered the shade structures at Friendship and around Lake Park, that they noticed those. They noticed them from the roads, and it's colorful, and to me, these type of things will get people's attention for upcoming events and things like that, and once they are start, once we start utilizing them for events, then people will start seeing them and then recognize that there will be an upcoming event.
The flags all the way to the left, are you looking at just like striped flags like that, or are you looking at getting something printed on there?
Yeah, they come multiple ways. We used, years ago, when we ran the Oktoberfest, we used those type of flags for the Oktoberfest years ago. They come multiple, you know, multiple colors, they come solid colors, and they come to where you can print to, if you want to, you know, identify with a event or, you know, Fourth of July, that type of thing. So it's multiple, multiple ways. We're kind of open, once again, to what council, you know, would like us to do. We're just, we're trying to do it to where, you know, as Mr. Cobb described, we think that the splash pad area is going to be very, very, you know, right now, Friendship Park is one of our highest rented facilities for birthday parties. We think the splash pad is going to go probably off the charts, and we think it would be-
Off the charts in terms of use?
In use and possibly rentals for future birthday parties.
That's a whole other discussion that I would-
Yeah.
We're going to have to start talking about the rental and how much, that's going to be a-
Yeah, you can't, you can't be close enough to a private party. I wouldn't even, I mean, this is just me speaking. I would just take that out of your mind, but continue on. I don't get it. You can't take a public amenity like that and close it down and say birthday party only for 20 kids, when you're going to have 100 other kids standing there wanting to play in the water. So you've really got to think that.
We can discuss that. Because you brought up the other sections of the park and cordoning off, and how we're going to do that, and-
We're not suggesting to shut it off. We can have that discussion, though. We're not suggesting to shut it down for the entire day. It'd be, it'd be our time.
And then the phone will ring off the hook. Everybody will be calling me or one of them.
No different than what we do presently with our parks, with rentals in our parks now. When we ran out of per billion, maybe you-
Yeah, that's a, that's a pavilion, you're not closing down an amenity. This, Drew?
We can have that discussion.
Someone's talking about, that's all I said.
I'm, I'm-
We'll get there with it, but Drew, you got to remember, and please, it's a public park.
I understand.
Well, no, because you're turning it into a private rental facility. It is a public park. Keep that in your mind, okay? Sorry, Councilman.
That's all the questions I have right now.
I didn't, where are you trained to thought, did I?
No, 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 really.
He's got a novel. I'll come back to him. Councilman Britton?
Well, I think it looked good a month ago, so I don't have a novel. I wouldn't even know what questions to ask. I think Cindy had some good questions. All I look for is between Mr. Cavanaugh's and the city's ideas, is that it's consistent. It looks well thought-out and very consistent to me, so that's as much as I know.
Councilman Hatt? Well, I agree with Keith 100%. I was good with this a month ago, before we all tweaked and everything. I thought what came in here was fine. My only, my only concern is, is this changeable copy sign out on Mitchell Hammock, so we got all these cars riding by it, right? You put this real expensive sign up there, LEDs like, you know, like when the one got shot up at 426 in Lockwood, they're out there, and you mess with them, you know. We, you guys all need to get together and figure out what's the best thing to do. I like the LEDs, you know, but, you know, I think the mayor was trying to hit on it, and I think we got to be fair if we're going to, whatever we do here, everybody else could do. So we have rules in place for the LEDs. I think it'd be nice that, you know, remotely you can change, somebody's having a wedding in the event center, and I do like event center better than cultural, but Brian, I understand where you're going with that. But that's really my only thing. Other than that, I like all the signs. I love signs, because signs bring business. So I'm not, I'm in a different world with my colleagues on signs, so I was fine from day one. Put as many signs up as you want.
Those 40-foot ones that spin, right?
Let me tell you something. If you had a nice tall sign with some LEDs on the 417 advertising at mall, you'd get a lot more traffic in it.
Oh, don't worry, it's coming.
Yeah, don't be afraid of signs, but I think it's fine, and, you know, I could, I don't see much difference really in the cities and what Tom brought in here. There's a few little tweaks, but whatever you all want to do is good. Just get it done. Do it quicker and better, and fill that place up and be done with this. That's my, that's my two cents. But I like it. I think it's very classy, what you designed out there. You know, I, it's not, it's not cheap. It's just really coming along, so that's all I got.
I'll just throw in my quick two cents, because I really don't have much. I mean, I like the city's plan. I like the way it's condensed down just a little bit more. I think it follows Tom's almost to the T, from what I can tell, but, you know, the attention-getting devices, you know, I'm not trying to put words in Deputy Mayor's mouth, but I think what she was, what I heard her going towards, and exactly what I wrote down here, is that you got to keep these things consistent. You know, we can't have just, you know, wavy hands, balloons, you know. Whatever we allow elsewhere is what we're going to use in our park. We cannot turn into, you know, do as we say, not as we do, and I don't think anybody on this council is prepared to, you know, change the entire sign code. So, you know, to me, those things that do this are cheesy, balloons are cheesy, flags are nice, the other balloons are nice, you know, classy, keep it classy. Tom wants you to use flags. Why? Because they're classy. So, you know, that's what I would like to see, you know, and it's got to be consistent throughout the whole thing. LED changeable copy out front, I think that's awesome, if you can figure out a way to make it follow our code. You know, one color in the background, make the color the same color as the green. You know, there's got to be, what is that, RGB codes or whatever they call it? There's got to be a color code for that green that you can program into that LED sign, then you can make your white changeable copy, and off you go. The banner over the archway, I like, I think that's great that that came back. I think that'll get a lot of attention. You know, in Tom's plan, he had the banner strapped over the rail. I'm not quite sure I like that. I think that's a little cheesy, so I like our plan for something a little classier. You know, we can sit down and debate, discuss how it's all going to happen at a later date. Let's just come up with a plan, so the man has something that he can go out and start talking to the retailers, who aren't going to come until they know what kind of signage you're going to have. Is that about right? You know, we can worry about the tweaks here and there. The A-frame signs, you know, I like defining areas for them, like just outside the businesses or corners, rather than up and down the entire street anywhere, and I think in Tom's plan, out in front of the businesses, you were just defining where the businesses were going to be, Tom? Is that about with the A-frames?
Yes.
Okay. Right, they're not going to be permanently sitting there. They're only going to come out for a special-
Exactly.
They're just not going to be permanently there. They'll come out when they're needed, and when there's not an event, they'll go away.
And Mayor, to answer your question, within the plan, in the attachment one plan, it does say that the private, the private sandwich boards will be placed out in front of the businesses.
Yeah, you just don't want them all over the place.
When we talked with Mr. Cavanaugh, that was one of the things we talked about, was looking at, as far as the city plan is concerned, looking at when we have special events, and it wouldn't matter if it's a city event or if it's an event within Oviedo on the Park anywhere, that we would be able to utilize those locations for any event within Oviedo on the Park.
I'm with, you know, Councilman Britton, I think Deputy Mayor. I think we're all sort of kind of on the same page. I mean, I would just like to see consistent, consistent and classy attention-getting devices. There is a difference. The sign out front, you know, if you can make changeable copy work, go for it, as long as it meets our current code. The archway with the banner is cool, the new layout is cool. I think we all came to a great compromise for a quality product. Councilman Chek?
I like more than you think. I really don't like the attention-getting devices A at all, because all I picture is Tuscula and 426, and I pass by that daily, and it's a, it looks actually like this. Just multiply it by like five and just put all those signs out there at once, and that's what it looks like every day. So that's all I picture when you have all these different choices. So I am squarely on- So I am squarely on board with limiting, in, in any way, the attention-getting devices, making them look classy and so, whatever it may be, but whether it's, and when you say having birthday parties with the little man in there, no, I just, no, that's tough, I, again, it's, it starts taking on a very cheesy aspect with all this stuff sitting there at one shot, and like I said, if you need any way to look at it, just four twenty-six and Tuscaloosa between Walmart and Tuscaloosa, just drive there and see every one of these signs, fifteen of them, you know, lined up in front of stores, three of them for the same stores and stuff, that I just go, and, and a guy spinning, at least multiple guys spinning out in front, just drives me nuts every time I look by there, it's just terrible looking, so, that's all I see with all the attention-getting devices, is it could be too much if not clearly regulated and kept in, in, in check. So I'll, I'll mirror both, I think, it's kind of what you were getting to and what the mayor was getting to, I, I clearly mirror that. I actually like the smaller sign out front than ours, the, the big sign. I, I like the design of the smaller in line with the fence, I just think it looks sharper rather than having fourteen by, what is it, four, six foot by fourteen or whatever?
Four feet tall.
Four feet tall, I just like his version lower, in line with the fence, I think it looked better.
So you, would you prefer, now that is a banner, it's not a sign.
No, you can make a sign out of it, I, I think you could make a sign out of it, I think he had both kind of versions it looked like in my mind, but I think it looked integrated into the sign versus this clunk work sitting on top of this nice fence that's going across and it just looks like something tacked on, so. I mean, you may make it look better in the end result than the picture that looks there.
That could be a design element.
That's what I'm saying, it could be designed better per se, but I, there's enough, with two of those, one on each side, again, rather, you know, as opposed to standing outside and hitting everybody in the head and saying, there's going to be something in here this week, month, for whatever we're going to use it for, we have plenty of ways to send out things, put up things, have those two big banners there, and everything else we're gonna do, people get the message that there's an event going on in there, what the event is, I, I think it was enough with that than coming up with another sign. I, I, I've said I don't like six, um, of the opening now signs, but if there's a way to fa, make sure how we phase those in and, and an end of life, because, and this leads me to making a codified versus development agreement. When these properties start splitting up, then each one of these signs become part of that property, right? I mean, that, then these, cod, these opening now signs become part of that property that he just split, am I right, or?
But if, if you have a development agreement that deals with this, which is currently being considered-
Right.
Those rights run with the land and-
Right, now, but then, but then when I change, say if we wanna change, because he mentioned the word tweaks, and I'm all for, we're gonna make mistakes, no offense, but we're gonna make a mistake somewhere or hope, whether you hope something changes, we hope something changes. I have to now deal with six other landowners, for the same reason that we talked today and said, well, we should be talking about the other two developers out there to make signage complete through the whole of Oviedo on the park, the two builders that are building there, so that both their entrances line up with this, that kind of stuff. But to do that, we have to, we would have to engage them in this agreement, I understand we don't wanna do that, I'm not trying to say we should, but as the property splits up, we get more people to get into an agreement to say, well, we wanna tweak a sign, we wanna tweak some signs. Well, that means I gotta get, if it is part of this property, that property, and this guy over there for the development agreement, don't they all have to sign in now?
As long as the development agreement says, we could, we could address that issue within the development agreement, that, that it would not require a comprehensive amendment with all property owners who've taken under, under the development agreement, but that's possible, what you said, is that amending as to one parcel could affect others.
I just see this as a code, I, you know, codifying it seems easier to me, I don't know what, you know, but we, we codify it everywhere else, if there are tweaks, if there are things we wanna later on, and again, I'm not trying to, I'm not adding, you guys think I'm trying to bombard this with stuff, I, I'm just adding a couple of little things or saying, hey, we should think about this. To me, it's easier to codify so that down the road, if it's all sold out and they don't need any more, you know, signs to say opening now, then we could say, you know what, let's remove those, we only need one or two, and it's easier to work with. Tom's long gone, Tom's sold, he's now working only on, you know, he, he, he's gotten rid of the commercial property, and it's, opening soon doesn't become the issue, I don't have six opening soon signs that I don't have, but they're there, just like the real estate, the leasing now signs, things like that, that continue on forever.
Yeah, of course.
You know what I mean? So I, I, it's easier dealt with in a land development code, but that, I'm gonna say it's above my pay grade, I know, I know that.
Just, just as, just the point of reference.
Yep.
If you codify, that's a general, typically a general applicability, okay? And you don't get, and that's an entitlement that you've created. A development agreement is an entitlement which you create, but it's in return for some public benefit.
You haven't defined that clearly yet, and you, you, in the first meeting, you were very adamant that there has to be the time, this has to be, has to be, has to be, has to be, it has to be in there. I, I haven't seen that in this meeting yet, that we've gone, here's clearly what our public benefit is. But I mean, the first one, it was very clear.
Well, I, as I understand it right now, the public benefit that's being proposed from the staff to the, the developer is the construction of signage on private property for the benefit of the city, with the city obtaining easement rights and the value of the signage, um- Excuse me? Well, a, a property interest in the, in the area in which the sign is constructed, but that, and then, and I know Drew's talked about banners, but we, you, one thing you will see out of this whole, this attachment three is there's no discussion of banners, because I think it's city staff view that that should be a separate policy-
Yeah.
-on the separate, handled separately. But the public benefit would be the construction of the signage and the, uh, the granting of those real property rights, however they're granted, right of way, easement, whatever, to the city.
I just haven't heard that yet, so. Those are your things, I, I, like I said, I'm very wary on the, the attention-getting devices and allowing, for us even, I, for us, that many attention-getting devices, that overwhelmingly, it seem, it will seem to overwhelm quickly and become very cheesy.
Tom's only allowed three, I think.
I know, that, well, as I said, I, you know-
Brian, what do you need from us?
Uh, direction for us to move forward?
When we started talking earlier about changeable copy and even last week, the conversation of LED lighting on these signs that I am proposing for the city never came up, and for the record, I think it's a bad idea, for several different reasons, you know, again, you've gotta get pathways to control copy, where's it gonna go, you gotta get electric out there, I probably have to have separate meters, you know, some of my residents, or not residents, but retail guys, you know, may wanna advertise on there, um, it, it's just putting a five by five or a six by six gaudy square sign out there, there's an LED, is not gonna work. Um, when we talked about changeable copy, I was thinking something a little lower, they came up with the, with the square sign, I said, fine, but the changeable copy, again, can be discussed, again, for a future conversation, but these are panels that you can slide in that say, band playing tonight, or it is a banner, you guys may or may not like banners, but we can come up with different types of signage, we can screw on the corner so it's permanent, we can slide them in, we can drape it over, or we can have an artist come out there and display something, I mean, but, you know, we can keep the door open for LEDs, but, you know, I, it, it's nice and I, and I respect the city's position, you guys got a very nice park back there, but I got a hundred million dollar investment sitting here that I don't want, you know, LED signs blinking and taking, well, at some point in time, you gotta figure out what the copy is, and then, you know, the, these LED signs, and I don't know who's gonna pay for them, but, you know, they range anywhere from forty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, just depends on what you wanna do, but if you're just talking about putting a black lit sign with red lights out there, we don't want that for Oviedo on the park, that's not what we're, the message we're trying to send. But I understand Drew's concern, I wanna give him a sp, a spot out there, that he can advertise band playing, or Oviedo on the park, or whatever he wants to do, we could come up with a mechanism that's very tasteful, it could be as nice as a nice plexiglass insert that goes in there that we can backlit, or we can frontlight, whatever you wanna do, but I just wanted to throw my two cents in about the LED lights out front.
You guys can argue that all out, I guess, I think that's the way we had left it in.
I'm against the LEDs too, so.
Actually, I wanted to put them over on four thirty-four, just a few buildings in.
Right there, facing up?
We're gonna let Steve decide.
I do have one more comment.
Sure.
I do like this look of the, the, the lo, um, the longer sign than that, that look.
Got a direction to look into, Dr. Carrera? I think Dr. Carrera might like it better too, because every time we mention it, she smiles.
Yeah.
When I said LED, she cringed.
The only thing you have to-
I think Theresa and I may be on the same team.
Yeah, I think you are.
You know, Tom, the point you brought up about the LEDs, I mean, you know, I, I like signs, but I hear where you're going and it could work, what you wanna do, the only thing I think you gotta think about is, is what the mayor was saying before, someone's having a wedding in there, you wanna give them some top billing over there, so we need some, so we need something easy to change, you know, something to personalize, because if you put band playing, you know, we don't know what band, so we gotta figure that out. I could go with, I could go with your suggestion, I think it'd be fine, but it's gotta be eat- Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Right. Yeah, well, you, you got lots of, lots of options, that's good.
So, Mr. Cobb, are you pretty clear where, where we're at? I mean, I think what I'm hearing is that we like the sign plan, we have to work on what the city sign's going to be, I hear, I think I hear more low than high on the city sign. I think I heard LED, not necessarily get shot down, well, one shot down, but, uh, let's see what we can come up with that really makes it work. I think I heard attention-getting devices, you know, classy, not all over the park, whatever we allow Tom to do is what we, we're gonna do, you know, we can't, we, we can't change the rules for us. You know, we allow three flags, well, that's what that whole park's gonna get, three flags. You know, six maybe on one, you know, a few on each side, but, you know, Councilman Schenk's right about that, I mean, no offense, Drew, it'll be a wavy, balloon-y, flaggy thing, I, not how you get, you like to promote your events and there's nothing wrong with that, but it's our job to really end sometimes. You know, balloons, wavy hands, that's, you know.
We'll concentrate on the flag.
Anybody have anything else?
So I guess the, the helium floating blimp, Shank is out, right?
But, but now, just, just so, council is fairly clear, we have some tweaks here, but Mr. Kavanaugh's actual sign plan were okay, because he's gotta go start to sell this to retailers, and that's holding up some of what could possibly go, they're waiting to see what they're gonna have.
Mr. Mayor, what, what Brian's looking for is, is authorization to negotiate a development agreement, which is pretty much what Mr. Kavanaugh just said, and bring it back to you, and there will be many decision points and opportunities to, to adjust as you flow.
I, I thought that was the answer we gave, but if it wasn't, if we weren't clear, it sounds like yes, 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 yes. Anything else on signs? Because quite frankly, I'm tired of talking. No offense, Tom. All right, city manager report. Thank you, Tom. Take your daughter home, she has homework, she's gotta get ready for school tomorrow. Now, every time I run into you, you're at Subway, so I guess we'll see you there. All right, Mr. Cobb, how about a brief report? Basketball game starting in fifteen minutes.
I only have one item, uh, Mayor, and we were scheduled to have an executive session on Thursday at five thirty, uh, we, uh, will be moving it, we've rescheduled it to Wednesday at five thirty, uh, in the conference room, so just wanted to get you up to speed on that, and that's all I have.
Great.
Brian, Drew had wanted to meet Thursday at the Apple Theater for a photo shoot, do we-
It's on Wednesday.
Are, are we moving that to Wednesday?
Four forty-five on Wednesday.
All right.
Actually, that was when Mary scheduled it.
Really?
Yeah.
That would've been a day late.
Yes, a Thursday. It might've been. Mr. Groot, do you have anything for us tonight?
Go Duke.
No?
Go Duke.
Go Duke. Councilman Schenk, anything?
Go Duke.
Councilman Hankin? You're good? All right, he says Wisconsin. Deputy Mayor Drago, Wisconsin or Duke?
Go Duke.
Councilman Britton?
Real quick, I got a few items here, I wanna go, sorry.
We almost made it.
Go Badger. First item, we had a Calno meeting last week, and, uh, I thought it was a very productive Calno meeting, uh, one of the-
Is there such a thing?
A rare event, it was at Longwood and they-
What was for dinner?
I don't remember. But it was at Longwood and they gave a, a very good presentation on Longwood's economic development programs, uh, some of which are online tools, uh, John, are you aware of op sites? Very impressive the way they're using it, uh, op sites is one they use is a, a free, uh, web-based, uh, tool that you can identify areas, greenside areas, or areas that you're interested in getting out to the development world that are available in your city. Another one was CGI communications where, uh, one of their products is a video testimonials of mayors of cities that get up there and, uh, pitch their cities on their websites, uh, things like that, so I sent the package out to you all, so I think those, the message was that we can do a lot of out-of-the-box stuff like Longwood's doing, and, uh, they demonstrated that they're be, being very successful with it as far as retaining companies in the city and, and bringing them in, so, uh, take a look at that, maybe we can, uh, get some input from staff on what we can do similar. The reason I was late today was I was at the Helpful Hands, uh, fundraiser golf event, and that was at, uh, Alloqua- that was at Aliqua, very nice, very nice event. Yeah, very good turnout.
Who won all the restaurant gift cards? Did you bid on this?
I didn't. I left after the golf, because I wanted to be here, and that's why I was late, there was a little bit of traffic. And the last item is I have a meeting on my schedule that Brian set up with some of the golf course people, Chad Barton, Randy Morris, and David Evans. The one item I wanna talk about is a drainage issue on one of the holes, number five. Some of the neighbors that live on that hole were noticing that there's standing water there. It seemed like it should've drained one way or the other. Bobby went out and took a look at it at my request and identified a failing drain system that's on the golf course property. So I wanna, I think Bobby's gonna attend the meeting tomorrow. Is that correct, Bobby? Okay. We just wanna make sure they understand what the problem is on their side of the fence, so to speak, and they should come up with a solution, because I don't, I hate for a rain to come and that water get out of hand. And then I think, per Mr. Group's advice, is I'm gonna listen to them without commenting on what their future plans are, and I will not offer an opinion one way or the other, but just to listen, and I'll report back to you all what I hear as well as the HOA. So that's all I have.
All righty. Just real quick, April 18th, there, what is it, the Oral History, right down at the Lawton House? History Harvest. So everybody can bring down their historical items, they're gonna digitize them, they're gonna do recordings. I know they've been out recording a whole bunch of different folks in the community, stakeholders, so to speak. They had an interview with myself and what's going on in current Oviedo, so we'll see how it all comes together. It looks like it's gonna be interesting. Go one way or another, we'll wait and see. Future meeting dates. We have now Wednesday, April 8th, 5:30 PM executive session here in the council chambers. Before that, 4:45, we have a picture over at the park. Monday, April 20th, we have a regular session. Thursday, April 23rd, we have a work session. Monday, May 4th, regular. May 18th, regular. May 21st, work session. That's enough, we got June in here too, but everybody can see it up there. Regular session, regular session, work session, work session, lots of work sessions. Must be budget season.
No, I mean, we should reschedule those LDC meetings. We didn't approve that in budget yet. That's my motion.
There's no motions during reports. We'll wait and see how they all pan out. Is there any other business before the council? Anything from staff? Anything from any member? We're adjourned.